We will go ahead and begin the meeting. So first, if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, on item two, so officially calling the meeting to order and then conducting roll call. Commissioner Burr?
Here.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Couch?
Here.
Mr. Etchegon?
Here.
Mr. Franklin?
Here.
I'm your Commissioner Day, and will the record reflect that Commissioner May is not with us this evening? All right, thank you. Item number three, the public comment. So this item is to, for the public, sorry, public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. It is recommended that speakers list their comment, limit their comments to three minutes each, and it is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts for commission will be provided to the commission secretary for distribution to the commission and appropriate staff. The public will have an opportunity to comment on items on the agenda once the item has been called and the chair opens the item to the public. So at this point, is there any public comment? Seeing none in the audience, did anything come in electronically, Christie? Or other forms of correspondence? All right, so we'll close the public comment at this time. Moving on to the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Have all the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes? Right, and if so, then I'll entertain a motion regarding that.
I'd like me to motion to accept the minutes as presented. Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Etchegon and a second by Commissioner Clement. Commissioner Etchegon?
Hi.
Commissioner Clint?
Hi.
Commissioner Burr?
Hi.
Commissioner Couch?
Hi.
Mr. Franklin?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well.
I don't know why that doesn't hear you.
All right, then moving on to item number five, a public hearing. So this item is in reference to the annexation of, or at annexation number twenty twenty dash zero one, general plan amendment number twenty twenty dash zero three, pre-zoning number twenty twenty dash zero three, planned unit development number twenty twenty dash zero two, tentative subdivision map track nine three two and major site plan review number twenty twenty dash zero two. Request by a semi group for six approvals to subdivide and develop approximately one hundred and fifty-six acres of land into a residential community with a mix of single-family and multifamily housing units in four phases. Exact, exact numbers of each housing type may vary slightly depending on final density, but there will be a minimum of eight hundred and tw- or I'm sorry, a maximum of eight hundred and twenty-five housing units in total along with general plan and zoning map changes. The project is bounded by West Lacy Boulevard on the north and Eighteenth Avenue, or otherwise known as La Moore Avenue to the west in the city of La Moore. APN zero two one dash zero three zero dash zero five seven. An environmental impact report has been prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. All right, Steve?
Hey.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission, Steve Brandt, city planner. As the Chair described, the project, this project known as the Lacy Ranch Development is a combination of planning, project approvals that together make up this, this project. The, just to go through each one quickly, the general plan amendment would make changes to the land use element and the circulation element of the general plan, and I'm going to show maps of describing each of those changes. The pre-zoning would pre-zone the site in accordance with the new general plan land use designations. The planned unit development would allow the tentative map to have lot sizes that are less than the seven thousand square feet that's allowed in the low-density residential zone and modified building setbacks. The annexation would annex the site into the city. There's also a related sphere of influence amendment to bring it into the sphere of influence so that the annexation can happen. Tentative track map actually divides the property and then major site plan review covers the site, lays out the site plan, the parks and everything, where, where everything's located. So this request is by the ACME group. I kind of just went through all this. There's a general plan amendment, there's new land use designations, pre-zoning, annexation, increase in the sphere. The tentative map creates five hundred and forty-seven single-family lots and two future multifamily sites that would have at least two hundred and four total, total units. There's not a specific site plan for those sites now, but there's, there's a minimum density that would result in a minimum of two hundred and four units. PUD would modify lot sizes, and then there are three parks proposed, a park pond and a trail. So here's the site, it covers one hundred and fifty-six acres, so almost if it wasn't for the city's well site, it would be a full quarter section. So bounded by Lacy Boulevard on the north and La Moore Avenue on the west. And then this kind of shows how the map fits into the, into the site with the overall city. So the general plan land use designation, so the map on the left shows the current general plan land use designations with the, with the site outlined. And then the map on the right shows how it would be proposed with the changes. So as you can see, about half the site in the current general plan is, is shown as white, which means it's not even in the general plan right now. So it had, it never had a land use designation. And that's, that's really the key as to why an environmental impact report was required for the project because the site had, had never been analyzed for development before, it wasn't analyzed in the general plan. So most projects that come before you have that general plan EIR as a basis under, as a foundation of analysis that, that the site had already been analyzed for development. And that, so since this didn't have that, that's one of the main reasons why we required an EIR to review the project. So you can see existing, not very much development allowed, a little bit was shown as low-density residential on the southern end of the property. The new site or the new proposed designation has the, has the park in the middle in green. Most of the area is low-density residential, and then the brown and the orange are the high-density and medium-density residential sites respectively. But kind of the blue-green is the park pond site. So the circulation changes on these maps. Current on the left, propose on the right, again, the dark red is our arterial streets. So that's La Moore Avenue and Hanford Armona Road that you can see on the left. And then there's a collector's street in the magenta that was shown just north of the Glendale alignment. And that's how it's shown in the current general plan. I think the intent was that they didn't want Glendale to be a collector's street, even though it's on kind of the collector alignment. So they put something a little bit farther north. I'm not sure if that was done. I know, I don't know for sure when the water tank was put in, but with the water tank there now, that's just not going to happen that way. And, and so the, what the applicants proposed is what's on the left, or sorry, on the right. So we would have what, what on the map is, is shown as Street S being a collector's street, and then the other street that goes up to Lacy Ranch, Lacy Boulevard being a collector. And then the portion of Lacy Boulevard that's adjacent to the site would be designated as an arterial. Just thinking about into the future, if the city were to continue to grow north and we do more general plan changes sometime in the future, you're probably looking at all of Lacy Boulevard being designated as an arterial at some time in the future. But for now, we're just going to do the portion adjacent to the land use that we're designating. So this is the site plan and the tentative map. So you can see that, that main east-west road that provides good interior circulation. The park right in the middle that's got visibility on two sides for, for homes facing it, two smaller parks in the other neighborhoods, and then there's a, there's an existing open ditch that runs along the east side and the south side of the site. And so that ditch is going to be piped, and then the pipe will, will follow the east, the east alignment until it gets to S Street, and then it'll go under the trail, along the trail and then head south to the, to the smaller park at the bottom. And so the trail kind of acts as an, as an easement for the, for the pipe underneath. So, but the trail, the trail's a good amenity for the project. It connects the two parks and then has an east-west connection to the multifamily and then, and then farther to the east. One of the things we were looking at most recently, if you look down at the bottom left near the water tanks where the ponding basin is proposed. We've been looking at the potential of putting a dog park in the ponding basin in La Moore. As you know, ponding basins can't be very deep. So we need to make sure that it has enough capacity, but, and so we'll, we'll hold judgment until we get the engineering calculations, but there's a good potential that, that half of the site could be used as a dog park. So that's a good potential for dual use. We'll make sure that it's ADA accessible and, and all of that. So for the planned unit development portion, there's really three lot sizes proposed. On the map, there's the, the lots that are in green are compact lots, or what, what, what the applicant's calling compact lots. The blue would be medium lots and the red are estate lots. So in the, in the proposed setbacks, the, the front setback would be fifteen feet for the compact and the medium lots, and then twenty feet for the, for the estate lots. The garage setback and the side and the side setbacks would be the same for all of them. At twenty feet for garage, five for the side and ten for the street side. That's becoming common in the PEDs that you've been approving in the past. And then they're in the rear, the minimum would be ten feet for the compact lots, fifteen for the medium lots and twenty feet for the estate lots, and then with the height still at thirty-five feet maximum.
Steve?
Yes.
Are we able to ask some questions along the way here? Do you want to finish your report?
Let me, um.
My question?
Go ahead and ask.
Very simple, because I don't know, the screen's going away.
Okay.
The little park right there, is that just for baseball, softball or other?
The park in the middle?
Yes.
No, there's, there's probably going to be a few things happening there. I think there's room for a pavilion. There's, there's still a question as, as to whether there'd actually be a baseball field. They're showing one because it's to show that the size of it and how, how, um. It's, it's a good-sized park, it'd be a neighborhood park and likely would draw people from outside the neighborhood because of its size. So we've got, there's, there's room for parking on, on three sides, and I think there might even be a parking, parking lot on the site.
Thank you.
So as I said, the project did get reviewed through an environmental impact report. And as I said before, this is necessary because about half the site was never analyzed in any environmental document passed, not by the general plan EIR. So the EIR was prepared by Crawford and Bowen Planning, and it was reviewed by QK and by the city attorney's office prior to release to the public. So the EIR is pretty much made up of three documents. There's a draft EIR, and this is the document that went out to the public for a forty-five day review period. And then anyone that commented during those forty-five days, we, we prepared responses to those comments. So the comments and the responses make up the final EIR. And then the third, third part is the findings and of which impacts were deemed to be significant. And then what, what considerations the council could make if they choose to, to override the significant finding, significant effects. So Travis Crawford is here tonight. I'm going to have him talk a bit about the EIR and then he'll, he'll bring it back to me for the final recommendation.
All right, well, good evening. Again, my name is Travis Crawford with Crawford and Bone Planning. Appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on this project. I'm going to give you just a quick overview of what was analyzed in the EIR, go through the environmental compliance process, the next steps, and then the city can open it up for, for public hearing. So as Steve discussed, the EIR evaluated construction of up to eight hundred and twenty-five resident, residential units. The unit types are broken down here on screen. Generally, this includes one hundred and sixty-four lots with forty-five hundred square feet, three hundred and ten with sixty-five hundred square feet, seventy-three estate lots with ninety-five hundred square feet, and then a hundred and forty-five multifamily at twenty units per acre and fifty-nine multifamily units at twelve units per acre. Steve mentioned three parks totaling seven point four six acres in addition to one point six four acres of trail area. For infrastructure, the project would construct a, a four and a half acre storm basin that was designed to accommodate the project, and the project would be required to, to connect to city services for sewer water and storm drain. So now we'll go over the sequel process. The first step was to prepare an initial study and notice of preparation. That is the document that basically announces that an environmental impact report or an EIR is going to be prepared for the project. It also scopes out some of the minor environmental topics that, that don't need analysis in the EIR. So that document was circulated for public review for thirty days in August twenty twenty, and we held a scoping meeting here in September twenty twenty. Following that, we commenced with preparation of the EIR. So to support the EIR, we had a series of technical studies prepared, and I'll just go through these quickly. An act conversion study, we took a look at the type and quality of farmland that is going to be, that is proposed for conversion. An air quality greenhouse gas study was prepared pursuant to the air district's rules and regulations. We took a look at air emissions associated with construction and operation of the project and compared them to the air district's thresholds. A biological survey and report was prepared. No protected species were found during the survey, but there are some known raptors in the area, particularly Swainson's hawk. And because of their historical sighting, there are certain mitigation measures that have to be implemented. So I'll, I'll go through mitigation later, but I just wanted to mention that there was no species found on the site. A cultural resources survey was also conducted. No cultural or historic resources were found during the survey. However, there are protection measures that are in place for, you know, discovery of, of, on previously unknown cultural or historic resources that could be uncovered during construction. In addition, there's a local Native American tribe that has requested to be present during some construction activities for, for monitoring purposes. We also prepared an SB six-ten water supply assessment that analyzed the Lacy Ranch water demands versus the city's the city's ability to provide long-term water supplies. So that analysis determined that there is adequate water to serve the project after, after mitigation, which again, I'll, I'll talk about mitigation here in a minute. We had a phase one environmental assessment before, performed, and that looked at potential hazards and hazardous materials on the site. A noise study took a look at project traffic, noise from construction and noise from operation of the project. It was determined that the, the project wouldn't exceed any noise threshold established by the city. And finally, the traffic impact study, this took a look at the transportation impacts of the project at intersections and roadway segments of the city. We took a look at many different scenarios, phased build-out approach, and then the, the long-term. I think we looked, looked out to twenty forty-two for the cumulative analysis. So that based on that, the, the project would have to construct improvements, which I'll talk about in a second. So these twenty topics on the screen are what we looked at. Of those twenty, there were ten that were less than, less than significant, that didn't require any mitigation, and there were ten that, that required mitigation. So I'll, I'll talk about those here. So quickly for biology, there's a requirement for construction timing restrictions and some certain avoid, avoidance measures that have to be implemented, have, also have to do pre-construction surveys for nesting birds and migratory raptors. Due to the, the land is, is kind of considered foraging habitat for Swainson's hawk. Even though there were no hawks found, there was a historical sighting, I think, within five miles. And so Fish and Wildlife determined that it's foraging habitat based on what is farmed there. And so one of the mitigation measures is to consult with Fish and Wildlife to talk about any potential mitigation that may have to occur because of loss of foraging habitat. And then fi- finally, Steve mentioned undergrounding the, the canal. There's a requirement, a mitigation measure to delineate the, the canals. And if, if Army Corps or Regional Water Quality Control Board determine it's a jurisdictional water, then it'll have to go through the permitting process. For cultural, I mentioned the tribal monitoring, and there's provisions in case there's discovery of cultural resources during construction. Geology, a requirement to prepare a geotechnical evaluation and also a stormwater pollution prevention plan. For hazardous materials, there's provisions for handling previous wells on-site and best management practices. So years and years ago, decades ago, there was a, a oil or a gas well that was dug on-site. But when they got down to where they're going to get down, they found there was no oil, so they abandoned the, the well. Hydrology, there's a requirement for the applicant to offer water shares to the city that are associated with the project site. And for water, it will also require payment of impact fees for new development. For noise, there are some provisions to limit construction noise. Public services, that'd be payment of impact fees for fire, police and schools and parks. Transportation, the intersection that will be required to be improved is Liberty Drive and Hanford Armona Road, and that will require a signalization and I think an additional turn lane, if I remember correctly. And then the project will also have to construct and install bike lanes, some traffic calming features and bike parking spaces. Okay. Forgot to flip through, sorry. Okay, so the EIR also took a look at cumulative impacts of the project. The cumulative analysis essentially analyzed the project along with potential cumulative, potential cumulative impacts from other future development in the city. This was based in part on build-out of the city's general plan. However, there are some topics like transportation. We took a, a look further out to twenty forty-two, I think, is where we looked for traffic to, to see what, you know, the project traffic would do that far out, and that's how the mitigation measure was developed. SQL also requires an analysis of project alternatives. So we took a look at the no project alternative, which means the site remains as is in agricultural production. We looked at an alternate site of similar size and then a reduced project alternative. We took a look at a fifty percent reduction in housing units, and that just, that kind of gives you an idea of what the project impacts would be as a smaller project. So under SQL, although the, the no project alternative and the reduce project would reduce the environmental impacts, those alternatives didn't fully meet the objectives of the project. Therefore, the proposed project, as you've seen today, is, is what was selected as the preferred alternative. So after going through all the evaluation in the EIR, there were four impact areas that resulted in significant unavoidable impacts. And those are on your screen. First one was for agriculture, for the loss of the one hundred and fifty-six acres of farmland. Biology, this was for cumulative level only, meaning the project itself didn't have a significant impact. But when looking at other development in the county, other loss of for, forging habitat, the determination was that if you combine all those, it's a significant unavoidable impact. And so that, that was the determination we found in the EIR, even though the project itself didn't have a significant impact. Same thing for hydrology, water use. The EIR found a significant unavoidable impact pertaining to regional overdraft of water. However, the project itself, in the water supply assessment, it was determined that the city has adequate water to serve the project. But it's more of a regional, you know, everybody's in overdraft situation. So under SQL, we, we had to find it a significant unavoidable impact. And then finally, for transportation, under a, SQL has a new metric called vehicle miles traveled. And under that metric, the, the project couldn't fully mitigate itself to have a low enough vehicle miles traveled per capita. And that was after implementing, you know, things like traffic calming features, trails, you know, bike parking, things like that. Everything we could apply to the project, it still came out as significant unavoidable. So under SQL, we had, we had to make that finding. I think Steve mentioned these will require a statement of overriding considerations. And again, all the other impact areas were either less than significant or could be mitigated to a less than significant level. During the forty-five day review period of the draft EIR, the city received six comment letters. The first one from Naval Air Station La Moore, they just simply requested a change of address for their contact person. The Department of Conservation provided some guidelines and regulations pertaining to the previous gas well that was on the site that they talked about. The air district sent an email requesting some additional information about the air modeling. They requested a couple of times, so we provided that to them. Department of Conservation, a different division, also submitted a letter requesting potential mitigation for loss of farmland through an agriculture easement or payment of inlet fees. The San Joaquin Valley Air District provided a, a third letter that just provided with, provided with standard guidance and information pertaining to the district's rules and regulations as they apply to the project. And then finally, California Fish and Wildlife, they requested an additional construction buffer distance for Swainson's Hawk, and this only applies if, when the pre-construction survey takes place, if a Swainson Hawk is found near the site, then the applicant will have to consult with Fish and Wildlife to determine what the buffer area would be, you know, and that you can't do any construction until the, the nest is, is acceptable for, you know, noise and construction to be around it. So I think we originally had five hundred foot buffer and Fish and Wildlife requested half a mile buffer, which isn't, I mean, that, that's a bit excessive, and it's not, that doesn't happen every time. So what we did is we wrote in there a buffer of between five hundred feet and half a mile based on further consultation with Fish and Wildlife. So it just kind of kicks the, the can down the road a little bit. So the final EIR provided responses to each of these comments. In addition, the final EIR provided, provided some minor technical changes that were made to the draft EIR text. This is referred to as the errata section in the EIR, final EIR. Those minor revisions were within the scope of the original draft EIR and didn't rise to the level of requiring recirculation of the draft EIR. Okay, so to sum it up, the draft EIR was circulated in January twenty-two for a public review period of forty-five days, was sent to local and state agencies, the State Clearinghouse, surrounding landowners and other interested parties. Notices were published in the newspaper and the document was posted on the city's website. The final EIR and responses to comments were prepared. And that takes us tonight where the project is being considered by the planning commission. And the next step will be to open it up for public discussion and comment, and then a decision by the planning commission. So I am available to answer. a decision by the planning commission. So I am available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Travis. We wanted to make sure we got all that in the record and that you were able to, to hear a summary of what was, what was in the EIR. So that brings us to the recommendation, the planning commission's role in this project is to make a recommendation to the city council on all the, all the items as well as whether to certify the environmental impact report. So staff is recommending that you, that you recommend all projects in the affirmative to approve the project. The there's a resolution that combines all of the pieces of the project into one recommendation resolution. And the overriding considerations that we, that we both discussed are actually is actually the first finding in that draft resolution, finding one A through F describing the the reasons why the approving the project can override the significant effects of the project, of environmental effects of the project. There's other findings regarding the general plan amendment, annexation, pre-zoning, the PUD. And then conditions of approval, most of these are going to be applied to tentative map and the PUD. And a lot of them are things that you usually see in, in tentative map applications, a couple that I wanted to point out. The, the applicant has, has requested this, and so we made this a condition. The, the very southerly lots that would back up to the existing homes with, you know, backyard to backyard. There's a condition now that those homes would only be single story lots. So that's similar to the project you, you heard recently. And obviously all of the mitigation measures in the EIR are going to be incorporated into the project. The, and the signalization of Liberty and Hanford Armona Road. If you recall, previous project you heard also had to pay, had, had contributed to that intersection. So the payment of impact fees is going to be the mitigation for that. And then the city will do a project to signalize that site or that intersection. There's conditions about the phasing of the, of the, of the trail and the, and the parks. Requirements for public facilities maintenance district, so that the maintenance of the parks would be borne by the property owners. And then your, the standard conditions that you typically see, there is one in the event that cart would like a bus stop in the area and there would be a bus stop constructed either on Lemoore Avenue or, or Lacy Boulevard. And then the finalization of the building setbacks and and that's it. So again, staff has recommended approval of the project. I know it's, it's a big project. It's taken us. What did we say? We started in August of 2020. So most of the pandemic. But open for any questions that you have.
Thank you. So this time in the commissioners, have any, any questions to come up?
Yeah, I got a question. The, the VNT standards weren't met?
No. And that's, it's mainly because, you know, vehicle miles travel. A project in the middle of the town is going to look the best. So obviously a project on the edge of town is going to look the worst. So it's because of the, 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 the average trips coming from this project are going to be more than, they're going to be longer than trips, people that live closer to the middle of the city.
Okay. I was just wondering if that was going to cause any, any issues or?
It's something we have to analyze in the EIR. And so that's why we're telling you that it did not meet the, does not meet the threshold. And then that requires the council to say, we understand that we want to approve the project anyways. So that's, that's what, that's what making those overriding considerations findings basically is. It's saying, it's saying we acknowledge that the project has significant environmental effects and we want to approve the project anyways.
And now to, to, to connect with that, has there been any outreach to a car as to whether they would want to implement a stop like near, near that particular project to maybe reduce some of the vehicle miles traveled and?
Yeah, um, it's, it's been kind of strange with car with the pandemic. They were, they were trying to do some things with Uber before the pandemic started that would, would have been pretty innovative, I think. I'm not sure what they're doing now. I, I, I would imagine they'll probably want something there, but they may not provide service for a while because it would involve changing their routes.
And then that's also where some of the, the components related to walkability come into place, right? To incentivize people to, to do more pedestrian activities as opposed to utilizing their vehicles. And it, there's some, you know, to, to get to certain, certain shopping centers, right? It's not too far of a stretch to, to, to walk depending on who you are, which personal.
Yeah. So there's sidewalks as a requirement for bike lanes. So yeah.
One other question. The mitigation revolving the, the gas well that had been previously dug, found no gas. And then the report shows that, trying to remember this, that it was capped and then abandoned. Is there any potential that there might be fissures related to where that, that well was that could pose potential threats in the future?
I don't think so. But one of the mitigation measures is the applicant has to clearly delineate the exact location of that well and send it to Department of Conservation for their review. So they may have something to say about, you know, that particular well, but given the nature of that, well, I don't think so.
And then in the research, looking for things like that, like oil wells and gas wells, how far back did the search go? Cause there, it could like, I noticed that one was fairly old, right? From 64. What, how far did the search go to, to look for maybe abandoned wells?
Probably as soon as early as they keep records.
Okay.
And, and this information also comes after you're part of conservation. So, so they're, they're the ones who provide the information that we can access.
And they're, they're pretty thorough about, about record keeping. I was just curious.
Steve, I have a question concerning transportation. At least unless I missed it, is it two lane on 18th Avenue? Or is it going to be considered?
Two lane for a while. If and when the other side of Lemoore Avenue develops, then it can be four lane.
Just on 18?
Yeah, yeah, on 18. So the same would be with Lacy Boulevard. They're, they're both arterials. So at ultimate build out, they could be four lane roadways.
With signalization.
Yes, with signalization. Yeah, pretty much. You should pretty much expect any arterial arterial intersection to have a signal at some point. But again, like this is, this is kind of like the first foray of development into this area. So it's not going to have everything right away because it doesn't need it. When, if and when other areas develop around it, that's when you start seeing two lanes going to four lanes, signalization, things like that.
And just a comment, I wanted to say thank you for putting the provision in for, regarding the housings, the, the houses that would be adjacent to the existing housing structures. You know, realizing that that had been an issue with the previous project. So, you know, being proactive and taking that into account. I seen that like, all right, yeah, cool. Any, uh, questions from the, the commission before I open up the public hearing?
I just was concerned with the well as you were being that we don't know what size that well was. And in fact, it was 1964, right? And they capped it. I'm sure the regulations were a little bit looser then than they are now. So. So do you know if they filled it?
So there's going to be phases that'll be built, right? Do we know how big the first one is? I think I read it earlier. It was a hundred something homes.
Yeah, that's probably the first phase. We're not specifying exactly which phases will be built first.
Yeah.
Recently I heard that's, you know, potentially the multifamily might get vote first.
Oh, I gotcha. Okay.
The multifamily would need to come back to you for site review because we don't have a specific site plan yet.
All right.
But that would just go to the planning commission, not through to city council.
Gotcha. Now the parks you said are dated to the city and the city, so the city will maintain it.
The city will maintain it with funding from the public facilities maintenance district that would cover the site.
Okay.
It's nice that this is all set up. We got the high density and the medium density already set. Whether it goes in first or not. If, if the low density starts to go in first, people will still know that there's going to be medium density, high density.
Shouldn't be surprised.
The city of Hanford is having an issue right now with.
Yes, more of that.
Yeah. It's nice to get that covered.
All right. See any other questions before going into public hearing? All right. So at this time at 7:43, I will call for the Yeah. Jokers. I will call for the public hearing at 7:43.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Jeff Roberts. I work for the ACME group. We're from Fresno and our address there is 1396 West Herndon in the city of Fresno, suite number 110. The ACME group is not only the applicant here tonight, we're actually the property owner and have owned the property for several years. Reyna Reyes is with me in the audience here this evening, also works with the ACME group. We work together on this project and others as well. Before I begin, I really want to thank your staff. I first called on your staff in February of 2019 to talk about this property long before we owned it. We, we saw an opportunity and we wanted to talk about it with them and obviously we kind of liked what we heard or we wouldn't have proceeded forward and purchased the property and filed applications, but you should know that they've been actively involved in every aspect of the design of this project. And are very insistent upon a high quality project with a variety of housing types and parks and trails and open spaces. So I just want to say publicly, I've really enjoyed working with them. And I want to thank everybody, all the staff that's here, the consultants that are here, Steve and Travis and, and, and the city manager for, for being here this evening. I've got graphics around the room. You have all these graphics in your staff report, so I won't go over them again unless you have specific questions that I could bring them closer and, and we can look at them. But there's the tentative track map, the overall site plan, which is over here, which shows the open spaces and the, on the map. We've got, and then park details over on this side. So Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'd like to state for the record that we do concur with the staff recommendation for approval of the project. We would like, we urge you to approve the resolution number 2022 dash zero four, which is referenced on page two of your staff report. And I'd also like to state for the record, we concur with all 35 mitigation measures contained in the EIR. We agree with all 31 conditions of approval that are stated on pages 18, 19, 20 and 21 of the staff report. And we agree with staff that the 13 findings on page 17 and 18 are appropriate and should be made. Staff has done a great job and Travis has done a great job explaining this project tonight. As you can see, it's complex. There's a lot of different parts and pieces to it. The only one I didn't hear them mention. There's the plan amendment, the reason and all that, but I didn't hear them mention the Williamson Act cancellation, which has to occur on this property as well as it goes to Laughco. But with all these parts and pieces, you can imagine there's been a lot of coordination, a lot of talk, a lot of meetings. And through a very tough time, this pandemic has made it a lot more difficult to move things forward. But we're really here in a fairly short amount of time, considering the complexity of the project. I think the staff's done a good job. I don't want to reiterate everything they said here tonight. Both Travis and Steve talked about the number of units, the variety of lot sizes, the locations of the different types of product or housing product that we expect to see, the multifamily areas. And then the graphics that are contained in your report. One thing they did mention, and we were here a few weeks ago, watching a project from another developer that was proposed. And we saw an issue where that came up about single story versus two story. And the next day, Steve can attest and the manager can attest, we, we voluntarily requested a restriction on the most southerly lots. So we've got 29 of them and they will all be single story. And I know there's a resident here from the area to the south that's interested in that, in that point. All the floor plans and all the multifamily site plans will come back to this commission. You're all going to see this project again. Tonight, it just happens to be the first time you officially see it. The open spaces, we've been working hard with staff and some of the residents getting ideas about what should go in the parks. And while these are conceptual ideas here this evening, we're kind of proud of them. We think we've done a good job in outlining the types of things that would be complimentary to Lemoore and to the, the city parks that we propose. I don't know if you've heard of pickleball, but pickleball is kind of an up and coming thing. And we show a couple pickleball courts on our large project or our large park. And then a couple on the, what we call the trailhead park in the south. We have tot lots, we have parking off the street for the residents that come to the, the larger park. We do show baseball because it said we should have a baseball field. And then we've got basketball court and a couple of the, of the park locations. And these things can, can change too. We can add things and take them away depending upon the needs at the particular time. The public outreach is something the ACME group likes to do with their projects. And we started out this project pre-pandemic when things were a little bit different. We had a public information meeting that was held at the elementary school just south of our site. It was well attended. There are probably 40 or 45 people there, pretty good input and very little opposition to what we were trying to do. As Travis said, we had a scoping session in 2020. We've given a couple of updates to both the council and to your commission in the past. But this pandemic made it difficult to have one-on-one meetings or group meetings. And so we've had to do a couple of other things. The EIR public comment period is a way for people to put comments in. And the comments in terms of number were very minimal. And there weren't a lot of public comments submitted. There's been notices sent to 111 homes within, I think it's 300 feet of the project boundary. There's actually a graphic that shows that there's been newspaper notices. I've actually sent an individual letter to the homes adjacent to the site to let them know about the single story restriction. We have met with school district representatives. At this point in time, I don't know of anyone that's against the project. So while we were restricted on our public outreach, we think we don't know of any opposition to the project. On the environmental impact report, I think Travis did a very adequate job outlining the reasons why we needed the EIR. It's the first time anyone's looked at this particular site. And all the aspects of that, I think have been adequately covered. I did have a comment about the VNT, which is kind of interesting. We, we deal with it as developers, we deal with this issue now. This issue didn't exist when we started the Lacy Ranch project. This is a fairly new state law that's been implemented during the lifetime of the, of the processing. So while the project two years ago, everything fit fine. Today, there is a standard that it can't meet and it, this happens quite often. And VMT is, is one of those and staff has suggested that we've done a good job in trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled, but there's a threshold that we haven't quite met because of our location. I'm glad the city didn't have to print the document that's your mint considering tonight. It's nineteen hundred and ninety-five pages long, so I don't know. I didn't bring my copy with me. Trust me, it's very, very long and very comprehensive. I should mention there, we've been working with the city staff. They're developing a new fee structure for, for the city, for park fees, sewer fees, water fees, all these types of fees that the city has for impact fees. We're aware of that. We are going to have to live with the city fee structure that is, that is in place today. And if there is a new one, we obviously will have to comply with that. And we'll remain very interested in that. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, rather than go over everything that Steve and Travis said tonight and everything that's in your very comprehensive staff report. I'd just like to again, thank staff for their effort. It's been a pleasant experience working here in LaMour, a really pleasant one. And I'm old enough and have been around enough to have worked in a lot of different municipalities. So this is a nice place to work. In closing, we'd respectfully request that you adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero four. That the Lacy Ranch project be approved, subject to all the conditions in the staff report. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any other comment from, from the public regarding this, this topic or this, this issue? Did any come in electronically or through other means of correspondence, Kristi? Okay, so at this time at seven fifty-three, I'll call the public hearing closed and bring it back to the commission for, for the discussion. Now, one question I had, so since a project like this, as this kind of looking down the road, the entirety of the project is, is kind of ballparked for around sixteen years, right? So during that time, since there will be an increase in demand for, for water, what kind of, you know, jump can, can all citizens expect within the city, like based upon that increase in demand, like just as it relates to this particular projects? Obviously, hopefully more projects come in and all that throughout that time span, but will there be any immediate increases that will be seen in the not distant future as a result of a project like this?
You mean, when you say increases, you mean like increases in water rates?
Yeah.
Okay, so one particular project, even though this is a really big project, is not going to be what triggers a water rate increase. The city does reviews periodically about their, their costs. And so it's, it's and, and they base it off of the water master plan, which, which actually did anticipate this project. So so it won't, so a rate increase is usually not triggered because there's all of a sudden more demand. And, and again, even though this is, like we said, this is a very large project and we want it to bring more housing to LaMour. It's not like the, we're going to all of a sudden have, you know, ten times more houses being built tomorrow because of it. So it'll, it'll, it'll ramp up slowly. And in the meantime, the city is working very diligently to, you know, ensure a good supply of water to the city.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just thought that was important to note that, you know, looking at a project of this size, right, and to, to get some, you know, perspective from, from an expert, the, the folks that, the work in the, that particular area that, you know, like you said, you know, if every unit was completed overnight, moved in and everything, that would be one circumstance versus what will actually happen with the gradual increase of citizenry and
All the other projects that are out there that haven't started building yet, they're going to be building too. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a gradual build. It'll, you know, the, the actual construction, we're, we're by your approvals, you're, you're adding to the supply of potential homes. It's, the market will determine how quickly those homes get built.
And then with the project of this size too, is there any kind of forecast as far as what amount of money will be? Additional monies will be able to be allocated towards like, like Meadow Lane because the property taxes will directly impact Meadow Lane School, right?
Hmm. Yes. So yeah, so it'll, it'll go to the school district, not to that specific school.
Okay.
It'll go to the school district, yes. So they'll, they'll see an increase as will the county and the city.
So any, is there, has there been any analysis for like a potential forecast as to what, what that'll look like over the, the phases of the, of the project?
We, no, we didn't do that type of forecasting. We thought we did enough analysis for it.
Hey, no, I mean, twenty-one hundred pages is quite a lot, you know, I was just curious, you know. Yeah. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I, I have a comment. I got to tell you, when I opened this up, I'm like, wow. I mean, I'm not trying to be biased, I promise. But just today at the city I work in, a guy came in, he wanted to open a little Burger Shack and I was dancing down the hallway. I was like, yay, Burger Shack. And then you guys have this. This is, this is amazing. And, you know, just the time that went into something like this. I don't know who at the city probably first saw this when somebody approached, but I bet you guys were like, wow, this is, this is something.
We were working on it a while.
Take a long time, you know, just
Credit to our former community development director, Judy Hallwell. She was, she was very involved in this early on. And I will always have memory of when I first started working from home in March twenty twenty of, of versions of this plan strewn about my spare bedroom, because that's right when we were working with making changes to the site plan, doing iterations, going back and forth. So so yeah, this has been going on for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's, we get people that in the city, I mean, we need homes. That's just kind of the way it is. It's, it's everywhere, especially in the valley. So hats off to companies and investors that want to come to LaMour and do this, you know. That's a good thing.
And I really appreciate the fact that, and I remember you were here at our last meeting, the fact that you went back and changed an issue that we would have run into again. Makes, makes everything much easier.
I have a quick observation regarding the post-motion of rest, we're getting up to the point. And I apologize for my catching this one. Maybe you review the proposed motion. It's on page two of the staff report. It discusses all the difference. You know, in, in the resolution, all the different approvals, annexation, general plan amendment, so on and so forth. I just want to make it clear that included in that, it's not expressed here for the proposal motion, but included in that is also a recommendation for approval of the EIR and the statement of overriding conditions. It's not expressed expressly in the proposed motion on this page, but that is also a part of this. And I think would be, I think it's mentioned here, sequel report and EIR, but, but yes, included in that should be EIR statement of overriding conditions as well.
All right, thank you. That was excellent timing too. So, so if there's no other questions or further discussion, entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two oh four, recommending the approval of the annexation. Excuse me, twenty twenty oh one, general plan amendment number twenty twenty oh three, pre-zoning number twenty twenty oh three, the tentative map track, tentative track map nine thirty-two, planned unit development number twenty twenty oh two, major site plan review number twenty twenty oh two in accordance with the findings and conditions in the resolution and the sequel report along with the EIR and the
Statement of overriding
Statement, statement of overriding conditions.
All right. So I have a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Eschegun and a second by Commissioner Franklin. Commissioner Eschegun?
Aye.
Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Burr?
Aye.
Commissioner Coman?
Aye.
Commissioner Couch?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we plan on taking this item to the city council at their first May meeting.
Right, thank you. That brings us to item number six, which is another public hearing. This is the general plan amendment number twenty twenty-two dash zero one. A request initiated by the city of LaMour for a general plan amendment to place a land use designation of agriculture on all parcels that do not have a general plan land use designation and are located in the unplanned areas south of Lacy Boulevard between State Route forty-one and seventeenth Avenue. APN zero two one dash zero two zero dash zero zero one, zero zero two, or yeah, through, all the way through to zero eleven and then zero twenty-three, zero twenty-five, zero twenty-seven, zero twenty-eight, zero thirty, zero thirty-one, and then zero twenty-one dash zero three zero dash zero zero six and zero six two, zero six nine and zero seven zero.
Thank you again, Steve Brandt. So I want to give some background on this before we get into the actual general plan amendment. The, the amendment itself is to add the agricultural land use designation to all the undesignated land that's south of Lacy Boulevard between State Route forty-one and seventeenth Avenue. So the background, so what we're saying is land that was currently not in the general plan at all, we're going to give it an agricultural designation. So it would be technically part of the LaMour general plan. So the background on that is during our review of the project that you just heard and recommended for approval. The city manager and I went and talked with LAFCO staff about how, how the next steps would go, assuming the project was approved. And also because at the time we, the council had recently approved the initiation of the annexation for the, the Casaka project on the south side of the city. That project and the Lacy Ranch project required not just annexation, but amendment of the sphere of influence of the city. And the sphere of influence had not been amended, probably not since the, the west side expansion in, what was that, two thousand? So maybe twenty years since we've, since we've changed our sphere of influence. So in talking with them, they were, they were pretty adamant that they only wanted to see one comprehensive request from the city. They didn't want us to bring the south side amendment and then bring this Lacy Ranch one. And on another day, they wanted, they wanted us to put everything together and and bring one sphere of influence amendment to them. So as part of those discussions, they also said, you know, we would be actually be open when they saw the, the layout of the Lacy Ranch project. They said, we actually be open to amending your sphere all the way across Lacy Boulevard from Highway forty-one to seventeenth Avenue. However, in order to do that, you actually have to have land use designations in your general plan to, to do that. And, and I said, well, the city's not ready to open up all of that land. You, you saw we had to do a nineteen hundred page EIR for this site. We need, they would need to be done with a general plan update to open up all that other land. And so giving it the agriculture designation doesn't, doesn't really change anything environmentally because agriculture is what's happening now on the sites. So having the cities, having the city recognize there's agriculture here and we're recognizing that and we want to put it into our general plan that way. It doesn't really change anything for the properties. It doesn't make it worse for them, doesn't make it better for them. What it does do is it technically allows us to ask for the sphere to go all the way to Lacy Boulevard. And staff sees that as a benefit because for one, it, ha- having, having land inside the sphere of influence gives the city a little more clout when there's a project in the county that the city maybe doesn't like, that we can, we can oppose it and have, having it inside our sphere means that, hey, we have a more of a vested interest in this area. The other thing it does is, is when and if we do open up that area for development in the future, we won't have to do a sphere of influence amendment at that time because it'll already be there. So given the fact that LAFCO is open to it, we wanted to take advantage of that. The way to do that is by bringing this staff initiated general plan amendment before you to do this. So again, we don't see this as having any change for the property owners. It doesn't make things worse. It maybe make things a little bit better because it gets them one step closer to development, if that's what they're interested in doing. But really, it's kind of a technical thing to allow us to make one comprehensive request to LAFCO after the Lacy Ranch project goes through the city council process. So, did I have any more slides? Yes. So the site location is everything between Lacy Boulevard and the existing designated areas of the city. So on the left, you see what the general plan looks like now. And then on the right, it would, it, it's, it's harder to see on this map, but it's kind of a light green there. And that's what the agriculture designation shows. And so then the map on the left shows what the, the general plan would look like if this was approved. And then it shows, and then on both maps, we show the existing and the proposed sphere. So there's there's really four areas that will be asking to be added to the sphere. So the Lacy Ranch site, the, the area that's part of this general plan amendment, and then the Casaka site, which was approved last year. And has been waiting for this, for these meetings. And then also an area down by Jackson forty-one that we wanted to add into the sphere because of a pending county project. We wanted to have it in the sphere in case there was a need to annex that sometime in the future to provide services or, or for whatever. That site is already designated agriculture, so we didn't need to do anything to, to add that. So again, you're being asked to make a recommendation to city council. So our recommendation is that you adopt the resolution that would recommend approval for the general plan amendment.
Any questions or comments regarding signing from the commission?
Steve, this sounds, it sounds great. There's no possible negative effects as somebody could have later. With the agriculture?
No, because the city's agriculture designation allows them to do exactly what they're all doing now. They can, they can farm, they can have a house. Yeah.
Increase in those fear of influence. You've notified the landowners and stuff like that. Is that
Yes, and they all, they all received notices of this hearing tonight and they'll receive a notice for the council.
Okay, any objections that you heard about or anything?
We did have one property owner call and Kristi and I talked to them. And I, I think there might be here tonight.
Okay.
So we can see what happens after the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. So if there's no questions at this time from the, the commission, I'll open up the public hearing at eight ten. So is there any one from the public that would like to comment on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Jeff Roberts on behalf of the ACME group. Obviously, we are interested in the Lacy Ranch project. We've seen this proposed action this evening on both the neighboring properties to the east and west. This is pretty smart. It is setting the stage for the future. It is removing, if there's an opportunity to amend the sphere in the near future, the city is very smart to look at maximizing that potential. So we think Lacy Boulevard is a logical northerly boundary to look at. And we're supportive of the requested action. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address this item at this time? But was there any electronic or other other forms of correspondence? All right, so if there's no further public comment, I will close the public hearing at eight eleven. A quick question regarding the folks that might have been in opposition, this this was the item in regards to. At seventeenth, right, because and involving like King's Christian as well?
No, not really, but with Kings, no, it 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 doesn't, that. That site is in the general plan, the the issue that they had was. There are property owners, there's there's land between their site and the city limits. And so you can't hop over property, you have to annex all of it, and one of the sites is the King's Christian site. And so they would need to also support annexation in order for it to go and and this time they don't. So that was the issue, that was. Yeah, I haven't talked to that property owner in a few years, but I I I believe I've heard they're still interested.
Okay.
But that that is different from this proposal before you tonight. Wasn't opposite, there's more of inquiry inquiry.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? So if there's no further questions or comments this time, I'll entertain a motion regarding this item.
I'll make a motion, a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty two tag zero five, recommending approval of general plan amendment. Number twenty twenty two tag zero one.
I'll second that.
All right, so I have a motion from Commissioner Franklin and a second from Commissioner Burr. Commissioner Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Burr.
Hi.
Mister Clint.
Hi.
Mister Couch.
Hi.
Commissioner Asher gone.
Hi.
I vote I as well.
Thank you.
Hey, let's see then. All right, so that takes us to item seven, the update. So this is in regards to the preparation of Lemoore Municipal Services Review for Kings County Local Agency Formation Commission.
Yes, that's also me, so. All and for all the projects tonight are kind of tied together, so. Also, in that conversation that the city manager and I had with the with LAFCO staff. They said that in order to, since it. It in order to bring a request to LAFCO for a sphere of influence amendment. There would need to be a municipal services review prepared. Municipal Services Review or M S R for short is a a document that's. The requirements are spelled out in LAFCO law and it's it's kind of like the easiest way to say it's kind of like a big report card for the city. It spells out, here's all the things the city does, here's all the services that you provide, here's how it's going, here's how. Here's how well or not well the city's planning for the future, here's how their government runs, their follow are they following all the rules? Of of local government like the Brown Act and posting notices and things like that, so it goes, it ticks through all of the services. That the city provides and and gives a description to LAFCO. You got to remember, LAFCO is in charge of all the cities in the in the county, as well as the special districts, like the irrigation districts and the. Water districts, things like that, so so for them, so before they approve a sphere of influence to expand. The city's ability to annex, they want to see that the city's doing a good job with what they've been given so far, and the municipal services review is a way to do that, so. We agreed to it's it it's technically their document, we've prepared it and are going to hand it over to them and ask them to. To adopt it as their own. But really, what what the document found, if you if you go through it, is that the city's city's pretty much taking care of all their services. So there's no action for you to take, this is a just for your review, the city council. Reviewed it at their last meeting, and so we're going to be passing it on to LAFCO and it'll be LAFCO that adopts it.
Sweet, thank you. Then that takes us to item eight, the director's report.
Evening, Chairman and Commission members. Get my notes out here real quick. So first off, I'd like to thank staff for getting all these projects to you tonight. Again, Judy Howell was here when this project started off, but Christie and Steve have been doing a ton of the heavy lifting. We also received some correspondence from an engineer that kind of gave props to the city staff. For when they're calling in and working, how well it is to work with the city of Lemoore versus some other cities, so. Pretty pretty proud of what our staffs have been able to put out and the compliments we're getting from those they work with, so thanks to staff. So a couple of things, city council approved the first reading of track nine thirty five for Lennar, that's the project north of Hanford, I'm on the road. Roundtable Pizza submitted their business license application, they're going into Kmart Shopping Center, Save Mark. Pad Thai pulled tenant improvement permit to be moving to seventy five West Hanford, I'm on a road, so that again is in the Save Mark Shopping Complex. Raised lemonade in the South Industrial Park, submitted tentative parcel map applications. Bottom line submitted their site plan for a project on the northwest corner of nineteenth and Bush. Base camp is to submit a tentative parcel map soon to privatize venture venture place, that's something that they they have to do to privatize that road. And then Johnny Quick and Panda Express Projects are moving through the plan check process. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the nineteenth and Bush project?
That's is that the car wash? Yeah, you like those right there next to Divida Dials. Southwest.
North, northwest.
Southwest.
You'll be able to. Drive onsite from Dollar Devil to.
Which was that was. That was agreed long ago, whoever went in there.
You know, right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine, the commission reports and slash request. Or to request from any of the commissioners at this time?
Yeah, excuse me.
Sure.
I had a conversation with Ron Mead today, haven't talked to him in quite a while. He is in great spirits, he's doing much, much better than a little while back. His family decided to remodel his office upstairs, he's looking forward to it because he can't climb the stairs yet. So he's he's making progress, he told me to tell all Bealow, and so it's two thumbs up and him move forward. Can't wait to get back.
All right, um. Yeah, then then just to echo the the sentiments that have been expressed already tonight. Big thank you, big big ups to all the people who have been working on all the projects and making things happen and. You know, really just being proactive in the development, positive move forward for our community. The son who lives here and is born, raised here, you know, it's really exciting to see the way that our community has grown then. Then to have the the unique privilege of being able to be just a small piece of 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 how that gets shaped, and so. I I know y'all are the ones doing all the real heavy lifting, so I really appreciate that and being able to kind of see these projects firsthand and. Get to 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 look at them and kind of envision what they what they could be and what they'll what they'll look like in the future, so. Thank you for for all the work that y'all are doing and making those connections and forging those relationships and putting things together to 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 grow and develop our community. And then. There's nothing else at this time, item number ten, I'll call this meeting adjourned at eight twenty one.